Tom King offers years of experience as a certified specialist for Napa Collision Centers. His hours are Monday through Friday from 8 until 5 o'clock. For a free estimate, stop by or call him at (634) 9296. Quality service that you can trust with an honest and fair price. Tom King's Collision Center in Neon. Call (634) 9296 for a free estimate.
I'm Tom King and I approve this message. Hello, my name is Kevin Hall, the new owner of the Holland Jones Funeral Home Jenkins Chapel. I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce myself to you, let you know who I am and what I stand for. You know, the people in Jenkins and Fleming, Neon and Mac Roberts are such wonderful, proud people. They've worked so hard with their hands in taking care of their neighbors. That's one of the reasons I wanted to come and be a part of your community. The new Holland Jones Funeral Home at Jenkins. Give us a call at (606) 821-2191.
Hey folks, this is Sonny Taggart, singer-songwriter, musician, rounder. And we're here right now on Jenkins TV 99 with Mr. Rick Hall. And you guys stick around, you're gonna see some real cool stuff, okay? It's good to see you, so good to see you. Alrighty, we want to welcome everybody to the November 3rd, 2025 Jenkins City Council Meeting. Thank you everybody for coming out tonight. Ben Clark, we call the row please.
Ernest Sting.
Here.
Chuck.
Sean.
Here.
Rick.
Quinn.
Here.
Garnet.
Here.
Alrighty, we're going to go over the plate.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, in your packet you've got the minutes from the October meeting. Entertained a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that home. My second.
Alrighty, have an emotion, second, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Alrighty, also in the packet you've got the financial report from October. You're Robin's here if you got any questions. Let's not unentertain a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Alrighty, have an emotion, second, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Alrighty, Donna, we're down to you and if you need to leave after you get done, you go right ahead.
Um, I'll speak a little bit on the ADA renovation. We're making progress, the elevator should be here Wednesday. They said maybe three weeks to get it installed, three to five, hopefully more on the three week mark. We extended the MO out to a year, so gotta give it time to get the elevator finished. In your packet that I gave you all, I listed the projects on the first page. The ones that are purple are fully funded in the Bloomberg parcel. I put that legend down there for you all. And, um, the thing on the right I want to talk about is the center lines. So we do updating and correcting of the roadways. And that's just you all gather the documents that you need for it to be changed. You all get a resolution passed, you submit that to CRAD. And CRAD does the math updates and submits all those documents to KYTC. KYTC, um, they review it and make the corrections and they put it in their files and get it approved. At least one submittal should occur on or before December 19th and of March 27th of the following year. Final submittals for center lines is May 29th. Can't take them past that, that's when the contract ends. As far as infrastructure, we have a call for projects that you're saving up funding. Any sewer or water projects that you all want to go for SRF funding, get up with me. I can tell you a list of what is priority, what's going to give you the most points. And we can help you plan that out, so you can score the best on those projects. You all can, uh, we can plan this, make sure the profiles in the WRIS are correct, your like components and the friction, all that stuff has to match to use the most points. It is a low interest loan, it's 1 to 2.75% and it does high loan forgiveness. The deadline for those are December 16th, so really you only got a month of November, so let me know. My contact's down at the bottom and for center lines, Jared Rock is the contact for those. Um, the only thing that I had other than that was I think that the revitalization plan, we got it submitted to the LG and we shouldn't be hearing back any day of release of loans, so. Other than that?
We will put out our APD for that. And the center line project, we do it every year. It's the road, how long the road is, the name of the road, and every year it's, is it Cove Avenue? Is it Cove Road or is it Cove Hill? So we always go back and talk about that, but it's just to make sure that it's got the proper name and the length is about right and we look at them every year and submit that to where they're in the master plan. I would ask RFP wants to do anything, but Donna doesn't, Donna doesn't do it all.
If we just do your thunder, I'll follow you.
But the elevator should be here, uh, Wednesday and I've heard from seven business, seven working days for three weeks.
The installer said it would be installed seven working days.
Oh, that'd be great.
Now, the certificate number nine for the elevator?
Yes.
Okay. The elevator has been funded through a CDBG Community Facilities Grant, which is a... What's CDBG?
The Development Block Grant.
Okay. I'm trying to slow down before we explain some of this stuff and let people know what it is. So now, if you all choose to, we're gonna approve favor requisition number nine. And that requisition is based on work performed, administrative costs and all that stuff up to date. So just to let people at home know is, once we get the award and it says, hey, you're going to get some money, that doesn't mean the money comes straight from the bank. That means you're eligible to draw the money down. So, once we complete 20% of the work or 30% of the work, we turn in for that much money. That money comes to the bank account and then we've got three to five days to write the check back out of it. So, even though there's some large sums of money, been talked about, been announced, we've got some big blue, I'm trying to call them award, awards, they're not necessarily money that goes straight into the bank. So as we do the work, we draw the money down, uh, depending on what funding source we get the money from. So with that said...
We've got a match on that, don't we?
Uh, that one, we had a $16,000 match that we put back a long time ago.
Yep. So we did on that match.
Yeah, we're gonna match.
Have we got that money there?
Well, we've already put it into the project. We've already...
Is that the, that's not the total though, is it?
The, this month?
At least not final, didn't it?
Oh, that's what I mean. Yeah, this, this is the percentage.
That's 94 for the 75% projected that we've got, right?
Well, 94 is, is for this pay requisition for the project.
Why don't you put this past month?
Yeah, and that, that's the, I started saying agriculture, but the architecture and administration part of it. And then 86,124 is the go for construction. So like I said, that's based on percentage of work done, uh, this past month. And then every month they'll do 20%, it might be 15, it might be 60, just depends on how much work, uh, they've estimated to do. We have progress meetings to make sure everybody checks off on that's how much is done. But I just want to slow down and let people know, you know, the money that gets announced, the big blue checks and the brown checks and all this stuff we get is this nose of an award. And we have to jump through a lot of hoops, we have to go through the loopholes, then we have to stay on fire and then it melts, we have to jump back through it again. So it's, it's a lot and it, but it helps keep it managed and maintained, make sure the appropriate money's going for the appropriate things. And then, you know, this, this grant was for an elevator and it's a community facilities grant for, uh, Americans with Disabilities Act improvements. So that's, that's for better access to city hall and that's all we can use that money for, so.
Make a motion for favor requisition number nine.
Second.
Alright, have a motion, second. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alrighty. Didn't mean to slow us down, but I wouldn't try to let people know what's going on and how we're doing it. Uh, now we're down to, how do you want to add anything, just to say something on TV?
No. Okay.
Donna's covered it all.
Alright, Donna got it all done.
I might quit then, now.
Alrighty, uh, Jenkins Waste Water Treatment Program Improvement Project Budget Amendment 264A, second reading.
Hey.
Yep.
City of Jenkins ordinance number 264-A, an ordinance relating to the amendment of the budget for the City of Jenkins for fiscal year 2025-2026. Whereas KRS Chapter 91A requires that each municipality except a budget for each fiscal year, whereas the City of Jenkins, Letcher County, Kentucky, has previously adopted the budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026, has a proposed plan for raising and spending money for specific programs, functions, activities, or objectives during the fiscal year so as to provide for efficient financial administration. And whereas the City of Jenkins has received a community development block grant for a CDBG cost, brings in the amount of $1,474,063 in connection with the Jenkins Waste Water Treatment Plan improvements. And whereas the City of Jenkins desires to document said transfer and to amend the 2025-2026 budget, show the inclusion of said funds into the budget and the expenditures of said funds from the budget. Now, made ordained by the City of Jenkins, Letcher County, Kentucky, as follows. Section 1, the budget, all the City of Jenkins for fiscal year 2024-2025 is hereby amended to allow for the inclusion into the budget for the City of Jenkins of $1,474,063, community development block grant received in connection with the Jenkins Waste Water Treatment Plant improvements. Section 2, that the budget for the City of Jenkins for fiscal year 2025-2026 is hereby amended to allow for the expenditures of the aforementioned $1,474,063 in community development block grant funds for use on the Jenkins Waste Water Treatment Plan improvements. Section 3, that this ordinance shall take effect following its passage in the bold publication enacted despite the apply 2025 Central Line Mayor, Testation Clerk. First reading was 10/6/25, this will be the second reading, dated 3/25.
Alrighty, that's the second reading, I need a motion to approve that budget amendment.
I'll make the vote.
I'll say it.
Alright, have the motion, second, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Alrighty, Jenkins I and I Phase 2 Resolution.
Order of the City of Jenkins, Letcher County, Kentucky, authorizing the filing of the 2026 Appalachian Regional Commission Application Jenkins I and I Phase 2 Project. Whereas it is necessary in the public interest that the city avail itself of the financial assistance provided by Title 1 of the Housing Community Development Act of 1974 and the 1981 Amendment permitting the Kentucky Department of Local Government Division of Community Programs to commence an Appalachian Regional Commission within the community. Whereas it is recognized that the federal state contract for such financial assistance pursuant to said Title 1 will impose certain obligations and responsibilities upon the city and require among other things, brings one, approval of a satisfactory application transmitted to the Kentucky Department of Local Government Division of Community Programs. Brings two, certification by the city related to activities such as civil rights, citizen participation, relocation, payments, acquisition of properties, national environmental policies, and accounting practices. And whereas three, other local obligations and responsibilities in connection with the undertaking carried out of the Appalachian Regional Commission. And whereas in the, those areas where acquisition and clearances proposed, the objectives of the program cannot be achieved for extensive rehabilitation and a displacement strategy has been formulated, now therefore be resolved by the City of Jenkins. Brings that the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, and hereby are assured of full compliance by the city for certification related to all regulations and administrations of the Civil Rights Act, citizen participation, relocation payments, acquisition process, accounting procedures, the Hatch Act, minimum wage, minimum hour provisions of the Fair Labor Standards Act, and all requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act of 1968. Brings two, that the mayor is authorized and directed to prepare such certification and to assure full compliance with all certifications as outlined in bringing's one above and all pertinent regulations. Brings three, that an application on behalf of the city for a grant of up to $2,500,000 of the Title 1 funds is hereby approved and that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute and file such application with the State Department of Local Government to provide such additional information and to furnish such documentation as may be required and to act as the authorized correspondent of the city relating to the Appalachian Regional Commission. Date line, mayor signature, and Testation Clerk.
Alrighty, need a motion to approve Jenkins I and I Phase 2 Resolution.
I'll make that motion, second.
Alright, have the motion and a second, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Now, Jenkins Radio Read Meter Replacement Project Resolution.
Order of the City of Jenkins, Letcher County, Kentucky, authorizing the filing of the 2026 Appalachian Regional Commission Application Jenkins Radio Read Meter Replacement Project. Whereas it is necessary in the public interest that the city avail itself of the financial assistance provided by Title 1 of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 and the 1981 Amendments permitting the Kentucky Department of Local Government Division of Community Programs to commence an Appalachian Regional Commission within the community. And whereas it is recognized that the federal slash state contract for such financial assistance pursuant to said Title 1 will impose certain obligations and responsibilities upon the city and require among other things, brings one, approval of a satisfactory application transmitted to the Kentucky Department of Local Government Division of Community Programs. Brings two, certification by the city related to activities such as civil rights, citizen participation, relocation, payments, acquisition of property, regional environmental policies, and accounting practices. And brings three, other local obligations and responsibilities in connection with the undertaking carried out of an Appalachian Regional Commission. And whereas in those areas where acquisition and clearances proposed, the objections and objectives of the program cannot be achieved through more extensive rehabilitation and a displacement strategy has been formulated, now therefore be resolved by the City of Jenkins. Brings A, that the United States of America, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, be assured of full compliance by the city for certifications related to all regulations and administration of the Civil Rights Act citizen participation, relocation, payments, acquisition process, accounting procedures, the Hatch Act, minimum wage, and minimum hour provisions of the Fair Labor Standards Act, and all requirements of the National Environmental Policy Act of 1968. Brings two, that the mayor is authorized and directed to prepare such certifications and ensure full compliance with all certifications as outlined in bringing's one above and all pertinent regulations, brings three. That an application on behalf of the city for a grant of up to $2 million of said Title 1 funds is hereby approved, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute and file such application for this state of local government to provide such additional information and to furnish such documentation as required and to act as the authorized correspondent. All the city relating to the Appalachian Regional Commission, date line, mayor signature, and Testation Clerk.
Alrighty, entertain a motion to approve the Jenkins Radio Read Meter Replacement Project Resolution.
I'll make that motion. I'll say it.
Alright, have a motion, the second, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, we got requisition certificate number two for Abby Jones, but I'd like Jamie to give a little update and talk about the public meeting we had and where you're all at.
That's, that's what I've got much to talk about here. I'm Jamie Solferi with Abby Jones Consulting and, uh, we had a public meeting that was absolutely fantastic on October 28th of this year and there was a huge turnout and this room was full, a lot of people about that. Uh, but between the public, the city, and the county staff, we have been able to identify and then conduct onsite inspections and map out 20 problem areas, additional problem areas to the ones that we found. And of course, we're including those identified locations and the hydrologic analysis. And, uh, ongoing, we received the KYTC plans for 805, um, which doesn't really affect downtown, it just affects up there and the one box core. So we had that, but we're waiting for the drainage calculations. And we've reached out and established a relationship with your high ground engineer for record and, uh, they're online and great for that. But they will be designing to keep, um, keep anything that they do on high ground from flooding downtown. And so those are the things that we are, are working with them to make sure that happens. And of course, the study, we've got a draft copy, everything's coming along very well. And, uh, we just want to get it all buttoned down and so we can move on to construction drawings in December or January and we will get authorization for that before we ever start on it. That's about all.
Alrighty, we've got paid certificate number two for the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery. I'm trying not to read through these without figuring out what it is. This is something we applied for two years ago and they've been really excited about getting started. Of course, we had to do the RFPs and you all helped us create them and we told Abby Jones Consulting to do this work because they do it in a lot of other places. But, uh, this is part of a DR, uh, Disaster Recovery Grant that we got, so there's no match on this one. And the total was $38,838, uh, and, uh, first administration fees in this one, that's the $14,538 to DCMC Partners. Entertain a motion to approve, pay requisition certificate number two.
I'll make the motion.
I'll say it.
Alright, we got a motion, second, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now Jamie, if you need to go, I'll give you the same opportunity.
Oh, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank y'all for having me.
You've got a pretty good drive to get back to.
A little bit of one.
Now, remind us of the email address that they can send pictures and stuff to, Jenkins Stormwater. I'm putting everybody on the spot.
I took a picture.
It's on Facebook, Facebook, but anyway.
It is on Facebook.
If you weren't at the meeting yet and already submitted something, if you've got an area that's getting more water than it should.
I had a big spark made for it that I'm ringing up here and they just didn't get that back.
But there'll be opportunities till we get the study done and then this again is, money was released for the study, so we have to concentrate on the study to see what we're going to do for the big picture before we get to the construction end of it. Total project was about 5.2 million, but, uh, doing the study is, is first phase to getting that done and drawing out a money to get to construction.
Basically making a plan, you plan, plan your work and that's what the study's about.
And it'll help us too, once we get all this stuff identified, even if the construction money is not enough money to cover all of it, we will have it so we can apply for mitigation money and other stuff later on to address each of the projects. It's on Facebook, let's see here. City of Jenkins Flood Plane, Anthony went away.
That's it? I said, I didn't want to leave you all from it there.
So it's cityofjenkinsfloodplane@gmail.com.
Can you pin to the top of the Facebook page?
It's pinned to the top of the Facebook page, I don't know what that means.
City of Jenkins Flood Plane. We had two websites, so.
Okay, anyway, there, there's still time for people to get their information in. If there's something that's a nuisance, it doesn't necessarily have to flood, flood, but if it's stormwater related and it'd be good to get a little something about where it's at, what's going on, if they got any pictures of it, that's happening, so.
And we can also put that in the water bill if we need to. Yeah. That helps, we'll fly.
Alrighty, thank you Jamie, be safe going back.
I'll try my best, thank you all very much.
Alright, we've got a snobble invoice reimbursement invoice. And this is the, is this disaster recovery money, don't we?
That I'm not sure of. This is something we, we paid out, I have the thing that's down already and there, I said on the cancel check, so now they got reimbursed us back for it, so.
So that's the Kentucky Emergency Management, okay.
Exactly, what I'm doing on it.
Yeah, yes, we were making, yeah, that's right, making.
Have they, have they turned it back on, the project?
I'm sorry?
Have they turned the project back on where we sort of held up?
I'm not sure, my hair. I'm gonna ask Jennifer.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
I apologize.
We was getting ready to do some geotech work.
I'll, I'll ask her because I know we have our upstate, our upstate being moral too.
Okay.
I forgot it.
Anyway, this is one that we've sent some safe funds out and, uh, we're going to get reimbursed to put those back into safe funds.
So this has not been paid yet?
Yeah.
Yes, we got actually, well, they don't pay my money.
Okay.
And then they, well, they, we have to pay it, then we have to send a cancel check and then they give us money back, so they will put it back in.
Entertain a motion to pay snobble, or, we've already paid snobble, so we're, we're drawing down. Need a motion to draw the money down from.
For us to get that back.
I'll make that motion, I'll play.
Alright, have a motion, second, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Okay, uh, the next thing on the list, the homecoming festival committee has a bank account. Now, the bank account has been under a tax, just straight me out here if I get those crossed up. So they were operating under our tax exempt number from our federal ID number, who utility. So, and the reason...
We got put that way somebody a long time ago before I ever came and...
Their checks had wandered through.
But they had to get it.
Yeah, so that's sort of how we figured that part out.
So we're trying to fix it.
So what we need to do is approve to, for them to use our federal ID number and have a checking account that is in their name and their, as the festival committee. have a checking account that is in their name and their, as the festival committee.
They require two signatures.
Yeah, I think they do.
So that takes away from us that we'll have their own correct.
They already have.
They already have, they didn't operate this way anyway, but it was under, when the auditor started last year, he found these different accounts, so, they were already operating under one of our tax ID numbers, but then we found out that it's the tax ID number for the utilities, we got two, one for utilities, one for general side.
What happened with this one was, I went manning the account, they do, it's their account, but they had reversed the city for something that they, that accidentally money had went to festival that shouldn't have been thus for Jamie, so when they wrote that check back to the city, it had like water and sewer on the top of it, and I'm like, I was so confused, so I called Joanne, and I said, why does your check not say I'm going to festival on it? And she said, well, that's what our checks has always had, I was just, under the water and sewer, and she said, yeah, it's been up there since I sent it up years ago, that's why, okay. And so, we called the bank, and it turned into a legal reveal about trying to change it under, we've got two tax, federal tax ID numbers, one for all of our bank accounts for the utility and our payroll and all that, and then there's another federal tax ID number that's for the general fund purposes, and so that needs to come out from under the utility and go under the, so I told her, I said, we've got to fix this, this can't stay this way, and your check seems to say I'm going to festival, and so, anyway, the, we need to get all this approved, they kind of give me a little bit of a hard time about changing it without-
You will need a stand-up, you'll need a stand-up on resolution to change that with the bank.
Well, as long as you give them the minutes, they already approved for us to go to a different tax ID number, they just, they said they'd approved it, and I told them we'd do it under the, we had minutes for it to, to show why we changed to tax ID number.
Do we need a resolution for that, or?
Yes, yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay, I don't look, I understand everything you said, I'll make a resolution that we proposed, make a resolution, is good.
I didn't-
Allow the festival committee to change their bank account to the, uh, general fund instead of utility.
Yeah, that's, that federal tax ID number, it's different from the utility side.
Yeah, it's their own account, they maintain, they put money in and out of it, it's not, not anything to that.
They already have, it's just, it's under the wrong-
We need to have it under the, the general side, federal ID number.
Why somebody set it up under the utility side, I have no clue, I've had that account for years and years, where I would gain, so, I have no clue.
So we just need, you make a motion just to prove it, and it is, okay.
Yeah.
I've got a motion to prove them having their account in their name under the general, uh, federal ID number, they are saying.
I'll say.
Motion, second, all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same side. Uh, now, we didn't know we was going to have this ready, but, uh, I'll just think that, you've got the payroll tax, uh, rate, amendment, the ordinance, so this will be first reading, uh, Randy, you ready with it?
Ready.
Yeah.
Uh, first reading, eleven three twenty-five, ordinance amending the rate of the occupational tax in the City of Jenkins, comes now City Council, comes now the Council of City of Jenkins, and in accordance of its resolution made in September, Council, being nearby, makes the following finding of fact and passes the amendment to the City Occupational Tax as described at Chapter, Section one sixteen of the City Ordinances, whereas the City passed a general occupation tax in December of twenty nineteen, whereas there has been no further adjustment or amendments made or two, and whereas the City recognizes that inflation and jewel cost of living increases have reduced the city's ability to provide basic services, and whereas the City is more and more required by state and federal authorities to take on more tasks that are administratively burdensome, now therefore be it ordained, considered and passed by the City Occupational Tax, Chapter one sixteen, it's hereby amended as follows, Section one sixteen point oh three, brings A, occupational payroll tax payment required. Section A, except as provided in Division B of this section, every person or business entity engaged in any business at for profit, and any persons or business entity that is required to make a filing with the Internal Revenue Service or the Kentucky Revenue Chamber, shall be required to file and pay to the City an occupational payroll tax for the period of engagement in such activities within the City. The occupational payroll tax shall be measured by two percent of all wages and compensation payable in the City for work done or services performed or rendered in the City by every resident and non-resident who is an employee, and the effective date of this amendment shall be January first, twenty sixteen, twenty twenty-six, and all other provisions of Section one sixteen point oh three shall remain unchanged and in full force and effect. Signature line, Mayor, Council line, signature, and Testation Clerk.
And that's first reading, uh, and some stuff I will talk about on this, nobody wants to raise anything or increase anything, but we've worked hard over the last few years, we paid off the salt truck, we paid off the two police cars that was purchased in our previous administration, uh, the fire truck that the city was making the payments on, uh, was paid off, now the payment now, the newer truck they've got now, the fire department is taking care of that one, so there's been a lot of stuff that we cleaned up, neatened up, but at the same time, just the cost of everything keeps going up, so just be thinking about that, this is the first reading, we can discuss it and go over it more before we have the second reading, so.
Can we bring those numbers back again, Mayor?
Yeah.
Once again, show the motion, ordinance for the city.
Yeah, that's fine, and, uh, the Mamba travel baseball, uh, they check, there's, there's one kid that lives in Jenkins sometimes with one of the parents that's on that team, uh, so it's up to you all what you want to do, I mean, if it's for kids and we can work it in, that's alright, but it does affect one kid in Jenkins, but whatever your all's pleasure is on that.
Have they given us a new day or requested a new day?
December thirteenth, December thirteenth.
He said thirteenth.
Do we already have one in December?
No.
I mean, Rick understands, and most people think this, it takes a lot of money to take kids around, so, and if we don't have any contacts, nobody else will be there.
I'll make a motion, maybe. I'll say.
Okay, got a motion, and second, all the favor say aye.
Aye.
And if you don't care, or I need somebody to make a motion, we go to an executive session about, uh, some property, uh, that we're working on.
I'll make that motion.
Alright, got a motion, second, all the favor, okay. Don, if you need to leave. Alright, we're back in regular session, and no action taken, so anybody got anything else? If not, I'd go for that final motion of the night. Motion, second, all the favor say bye, thank you all.
I'm Kevin Hall, proud owner and funeral director of Holland Jones Funeral Home Jenkins Chapel. We're happy to be a part of Letcher County, and I'd like to take just a few minutes to show you all the renovations that we have done here at the new Holland Jones Funeral Home Jenkins Chapel. As you can see, here's our beautiful renovated chapel that we have, we've added new lighting, new windows, carpet, chairs, piano, the entire place has been renovated from top to bottom Careful planning went into every detail of the renovation here at Holland Jones Funeral Home Jenkins Chapel to make sure that your family is as comfortable as they can be. We've added a full lounge area, so your family can bring in snacks, coffee, drinks, so they can feel as comfortable as possible during the funeral services. So I'd like to encourage you and your family, feel free to stop by the Holland Jones Funeral Home Jenkins Chapel at any time, and we'll be happy to show you around, we offer full-service funerals, cremation, preneed funeral plans to save your family with peace of mind, also we've got one of the largest parking lots for, here in the area, so give us a call and stop by, we'll be looking for you. Tom King offers years of experience as a certified specialist for Napa Collision Centers. His hours are Monday through Friday from eight until five o'clock. For a free estimate, stop by or call him at six three four ninety-two ninety-six. Quality service that you can trust with an honest and fair price. Tom King's Collision Center in Neon. Call six three four nine two nine six for a free estimate. I'm Tom King, and I approve this message.